Yes, I can.
Is everybody ready here to get started? Thumbs up? Very good. Good morning. I'd like to call to order this on October fifth meeting of, I'm sorry, October sixth meeting of the Board of County Commissioners from Sweetwater County. And at this time, we do have a quorum present and please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. With that, we'll take first order business is approval of the agenda and I would request that the commissioners amend the agenda in executive session to include real estate. Commissioners, are there any other?
Doc?
Who gen?
Doc?
Commissioner Johnson.
The agenda already says that we're going to discuss real estate.
Oh, it's already there. Mine didn't say that. I'm sorry. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. All right. With that, I'll withdraw the amended request and request, look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
A motion by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane Field. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With that, our next order of business is approval of the minutes of September 15, 2020. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Lloyd.
I, I move that we approve the minutes.
Got a motion.
Yep.
Go ahead and Commissioner Lloyd.
From nine fifteen.
Okay, got a commissioner for, got a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to approve the minutes of September 15, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane Field. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next order of business under tab B is acceptance of the bills, which is approval of the county vouchers and warrants, approval of the bonds, approval of the ABATs rebates and approval of hospital expenditures. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Shane Field.
I'll make a motion that we approve the county vouchers and warrants, the bonds, the ABATs rebates and the hospital expenditures as presented.
We have a motion to approve the bills. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Up now, at this time, next order of business is county residents' concerns. So we'll pause and wait for any county residents' concerns. Tim, do you have any on email?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have any on email at this time.
Thank you. Any county resident concerns? Excuse me. County residents' concerns. Anything come in, Tim?
There are none at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close this part of the meeting and close the county residents' concerns and we'll move on with Commissioner comments or reports. We'll start with Commissioner Shane Field. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Liaison work has been busy. I want to give a quick update on SEDC. Project Tropical, which is a small food manufacturer, is continuing to express some interest in Sweetwater County. So Kayla and Eric have been communicating with the company and they've been having some conversations about some land opportunities and have scheduled a meeting to talk to them about some availability of some land and some property for their project this, this week, I believe. Eric and Kayla also recently visited with a data mining company that has some interest in the trona industry regarding the opportunity for bitcon mining. And then we have the Middle Baxter Industrial Development Study moving along very nicely. We actually had a meeting, it was two weeks ago now. There's a nice press release with a link on the county website if anybody wants to get updated on that meeting and some of the information that was shared. And we also have a strategic meeting next week with the industry and education partners. So the mines and Simplot and, and some of the other industry partners that, that would potentially be a part of the project. And that is next week, hopefully in person, but we'll see how that goes moving forward. SEDC has also been working on to talk about what we're doing. We've realized that we haven't done a really good job of sharing information. And so Kayla has been on KREO radio twice a month since August. And that's actually brought a lot of people asking questions and providing some input as well. That's the interview is on the first and third Thursday at eight AM on 93.5. And this Thursday, Kayla and Reed Clevenger are going to be meeting with Johnny K to talk about the partnerships with the City of Green River and SEDC as well as some economic development projects that Green River is working on specifically. We're also working on finding some funding around website design and getting some marketing materials put together. So they've been very busy and things are moving forward nicely with SEDC. The next thing I want to update on is our grants. Christina has also been very busy with CARES funding. So she is collaborating with the CARES Act grants with Memorial Hospital. We'll see these at our next meeting. But with Memorial Hospital, a second application for Southwest Counseling, the airport, the clerk of district court and the county attorney's office. And then she's also had some departments and agencies who she's been in conversation with that are going to be getting with her soon to talk about moving forward even more with funding. She's also expecting that the Department of Health will be approving the county's grant assistance for low-income families at Young at Heart Senior Center, YWCA Head Start and the Sweetwater County Family Resource Center. Christina is also coordinating Community Juvenile Services Board meeting this Thursday that is also open to the public. There's a lot of concern because due to all of the budget cuts with our economy, the juvenile justice system may be impacted fairly significantly. So they're meeting to discuss that. The museum has been very busy. Congratulations to the new director, Dave Mead, who has been with the museum for a while now. He has stepped up into this new position and they are working through what that means to changing their budget, knowing that we have difficult times ahead and are working through that as a board. So we're looking forward to hearing a little bit more information on what they decide they're going to be doing moving forward. I also wanted to give an update on the broadband task force. We have a meeting next week. We've met two weeks ago as well. We've been working as a subcommittee as well on the funding or the bill to see how we can ensure that we get funding out to our communities. We've had kind of a holdup with that legislation in providing funding out to the communities. I think it's provided a lot of awareness. But the CARES Act funding and the overwhelming response from our providers shows that there's a huge need and that our communities are ready and our providers are ready. So we're trying to adjust the legislation to ensure that we can continue to provide that funding outward. So I think with that, that's everything that I have for right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
I'd just like to thank the museum board for the excellent job they've done down in front of P and Z for recognition of the engineers historically in Sweetwater County. They've done a great job with that. And there's been favorable comment that's come back to me relative to that.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Any other comments, Commissioners? A question from me to you, Commissioner Shane. A question from me to you, Commissioner Shane Field, is when you talked about the CARES Act funding, there's, of course, the first CARES Act funding that came out and then part of the 1.25, which was allocated to the state. There was a certain, the governor's through his office has allocated and worked out dollars to cities, towns, and counties. Is that correct? Do you recall what the amount was for Sweetwater County?
I don't recall off the top of my head, but I would be willing to bet that Christina would be able to answer that for us.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, the only reason is, is because if I understand correctly, significant amount of money that's, has strings tied to it. And with that thought, that if it doesn't get used for the county based on those strings that are attached, that money could go back to the feds and that type of thing is quite significant. I think what could be ahead for us that I think's important is if this new CARES Act, which is getting closed for the government, federal government, Congress in Washington to approve, hopefully they stick with some guidelines that will relax those ties and also probably provide more money for city, towns, and counties. So Christina is working very hard with that and I appreciate that very much. But thank you for your report. Any other questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I did find a note. It's, it's a little over $6 million in CARES funding for Sweetwater County. And I also noted, this was with a conversation with Christina, that we have FEMA can be used to match some of that money as well. And so they're kind of working together in conjunction. But yeah, that's a lot of money to try to get spent through the end of this year for our communities. And so Christina has been working very hard to put together projects that are applicable, that will fit under that funding to, to assist our county. She's doing a great job.
Yeah. And the one other note that I had was I know Senator Russell's working hard in, in Washington with the new CARES Act to not only hopefully get language in that extends the December 31st deadline for everybody, but also to get some of those requirements relaxed and how that money's being spent. So thank you for that. Great report and great job coming out of our grants office, as well as I agree with Commissioner Johnson with the museum. Congratulations to their new director, but also the exhibit downstairs. I've looked at it quite often and I see a semblance down there. That's a very good portrait. So it'll, it'll be quite a thing for the future. Thank you. Next up, Commissioner Lloyd, you're up.
Good morning, everyone. Been a kind of a busy couple of weeks with liaison and committee meetings and board meetings. I'll start with Southwest Counseling. September, they celebrated National Recovery Month. Unfortunately, due to COVID, they couldn't give it the same exposure and activities that they typically have done, but...
Commissioner Lloyd, I think your computer froze up if you could hear me. There you go.
Okay. All right, good. But they have some CARES Act COVID funding that they've been working on, and they're still kind of awaiting what the final look of their cut from the state will be with the, they know the percentages, they know that they're, we cut, but they haven't seen exactly what that will look like. And they're still working through that. Library Board continuing to move forward. Jason and his group done a great job to do outreach work during the COVID times where they couldn't bring people in and they're going out and doing events. And so no major concerns there. Events complex, they've had some change in their personnel. Bob Perry has retired and moved on after a lot of years out there and has done a great job. And I just want to thank Bob for all the work he's done at the events complex. And Lena Warren has gone for now working at the hospital and has left Southwest County, well, sorry, the events complex. And Lena will be greatly missed at the events complex for all the work and marketing and events she's helped bring in. And so I wanted to thank those two. We all know the events complex has had some financial difficulties based upon really the changing of the, of the COVID's change to our environment and the ability to bring in events. And they're continuing to move forward, but really with some of the different changes they've made, they've had around a 40% reduction in force since the beginning of COVID and that should be noted. They are working toward getting events back on track. They have been in contact with some of the RV shows and such that they've done in the past, and they're still planning on coming back next year and events are on hold. So are moving toward next year again, and they are starting to generate some events at the events complex, racing throughout the summer. They had the horse racing and they've also, of course, continued with BMX, motocross, horse events and such. So they are starting to ramp back up a little bit, but have a long way to get back to anywhere they, any, any semblance of where they used to be. Or Lauren's kind of mentioned in my next conversation, but I'm, juvenile probation, I've met with Karen Kelly and we do have a community, our community juvenile probation board meeting on Thursday this week, and we will be discussing what we kind of do with that board. The funding has been pretty much cut for that, the grant that used to be given in the future. So we'll be talking about how we're moving forward and those kinds of things, and that's created an issue. In our program, we do for the pre-court diversion program, which is a really efficient program that helps save dollars to the community by keeping first and second time of, you know, first or lower, lower offense offenders from having to go right into the court system. And that funding's been hit pretty dramatically by the state. So we'll be discussing that and meeting that with that on Thursday. Met with a lot of different department heads and, department heads and elected officials. Met with Christina about grants. I've met with Mark Cotton about land issues and such. Had opportunities to meet with Eric, Gary, Assessor Devis, Treasurer Slaughter, Clerk at Court Stodda Lee, Boback, and I've also met with John Daleion about various issues over the last couple of weeks. And then also reached out to the smaller communities in the last couple of weeks to set up times to maybe, we'll listen to a council meeting or just become a little more visible in those smaller communities that are very important to what we do here in Sweetwater County. And then just our second strategic planning meeting will be the second meeting in November after our meeting. I do have notes that are ready to go out. I do have a couple commissioners looking at those to make sure they comprehended what we wanted. As soon as we have that, I will kick that back out to everyone. And I'll just close by just saying that I'm really eager to hear what Assessor Devis shares today during his presentation. We've had a chance to see some of that information already. But, you know, what we could be looking at could be fairly daunting. And so I really look at us as a commission being pro, very proactive to what we need to do with potential budgets. So with that, that's all I, I have at this point, if there's any questions for me.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any questions, fell commissioners? None at this time. Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Our next report, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I have the Public Works Department report for October 6th. The building is the County Courthouse Roofing Project is approximately 40% complete and is progressing on schedule. The County Courthouse Boiler Project should be done this week. We have had some issues due to the parts being delayed, but the startup testing and balancing are scheduled for this week. The COVID technology upgrade to district courts is going fairly smoothly. Project should be completed by the end of this week. Engineering, the Long Drive Reconstruction Project is completed with some minor punch list items left to do. Dibonardi Construction did a great job with keeping up with the original schedule, even though we ran into some subgrade issues. Request for proposal for engineering and construction administration services for the Folsom Drive, Pyramid Drive, and Lester Drive Reconstruction Project will be received from the engineering companies next week. The RFP Committee will be reviewing the proposals, and we'll make a recommendation to the board at the November 3rd meeting. The specifications for the fiscal year 2020 crack ceiling project are complete and are verifying the data we received from the University of Wyoming Technology Transfer Center and our measurements so that we can get a better handle on the project's scope and cost. The State CMAC Committee met last Monday and Sweetwater County was awarded our full request for our fiscal year 21 CMAC dust control project. The awarded amount was $349,915.78 plus or minus. The CMAC Committee was last, met last Monday and Sweetwater, excuse me. Can't keep myself straight here. Road and Bridge. Crews have been hauling the rotor mill tailings that we received from YDOT the last summer from the Bitter Creek Interchange to CR number 67 Tipton and CR number 19 Bitter Creek South. In the middle of this week, crews will move the haul, will move and haul the rotor mills tailings we received two years ago from YDOT to CR 70 Browns Park Road. This is in preparation for using a reclamer on this roadway starting October 19th. The reclamer is needed to mix the new rotor mill tailings into the existing roadway to improve the surface quality of this failing roadway service. And as you know, we have received many complaints on that road. So that's great to hear that. And in this report, Gene has gone beyond himself in providing us with pictures, pictures worth a thousand words, I guess, and Gene believes that. So there's some great pictures in there for, for the commissioners to look at. Unfortunately, I can't share those with the public under this situation. Next, I have the, we will be, I will be meeting with the coalition local governments on the 17th. I, I met with the coalition local governments on the 17th of September and the issue still being discussed and hopefully having some progress is the, what's happening with Rock Mountain Energy and Power Plants. There's still some discussions as to what, there, there still are many discussions as to what might become of the non-power plant and also the Bridger Power Plant. Next, on the second, relative to the Ashley National Forest, on the 1st of September, I wrote a letter with Mark's help to the new director of the Ashley National Forest, a lady by the name of Susan Eichoff, and welcoming her to Sweetwater County and asking if she would be interested in meeting with us, you know, with a luncheon and getting an upgrade as to what the Board of County Commissioners feel about what's going on with the Ashley. And on the second, Mark and I traveled to Vernal and met with her and presented her with our resolution relative to the Flaming Gorge. And the issue that Mark and I both drove home with her is that the Flaming Gorge Recreation Area is a recreation area and it should be maintained as that. And we made recommendations to her how, how that might go forward. And she was very receptive to hear what we had to say. And I was very receptive to the way she received them. I was impressed with her. And I think that going forward is, she's going to be a, a good addition to the Ashley. And with that, that's all I have to report unless somebody has some questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Any questions for Commissioner Johnson, commissioners? With that, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Great report. Next, myself. Like everybody else, liaison work is, is still being done by Zoom and that type of thing. The only, there's one or two that are starting to be face to face. One of them's Conservation District. And, and, but the rest of them are still by Zoom and that seems to be going along well. We did get some correspondence over the last two weeks and I'd like to share those letters with the other commissioners because they're in recognition of some of the work that's our people have done. The first one comes to us from the principal at the Hemmingford Junior Senior High School, not Hemmingford, I'm sorry, Hanny Elk Mountain Junior Senior High School in Hanny Elk Mountain area. There was a fire down there and of course, we did send some crew down there from the district to help assist with our resources when they were called. And this is from Stephen Priest, again, to get the principal there at the junior high. And he says, "We appreciate all of the first responders that provided assistance with the 316 fire near Hannah, Wyoming. Without you, we may not be sitting here in school today. We would like to recognize all of the first responders for their efforts during our homecoming festivities this year. We usually honor a super fan during homecoming. This year, we are honoring all first responders from 316 fire with our minor super fan recognition." They'll do this at halftime of the football game on October 3rd, 2020. The town will also have a meal at the rec center. Of course, that was this last Friday. Those firefighters that were part of that 316 fire recognition but couldn't meet, meet it, but they were recognized and they were from the county fire department, Dante Crouppa and Josh Parker and Cassidy Baird. So those three firefighters were in that area fighting fire and help protecting resources in that small community and they're very grateful. So I'd also like to send out on our behalf, a thank you to those firefighters as well as for Warden Bornazian in making that resource available when called upon. So second letter that I received, this is regarding our county director of public works, Mr. Gene Legursky, and this is from James Olson, who is a, from the Geo-Technical Engineering Group and Bureau of Reclamation. He says, "Mr. Wendling, I want to reach out to you to provide feedback for the Sweetwater County Director of Public Works, Mr. Legursky. I recently reached out to Gene because I needed some bridge information related to the upcoming work at Big Sandy Dam. I'm highly impressed on how timely and responsive Gene was in helping me with my inquiries. I've worked with other counties throughout Colorado, Wyoming, Nebraska in my career, and all were reasonable to work with, but Gene stood out to me because he seems to go above and beyond to quickly respond to inquiries and is very approachable on the phone. Gene's help has been very much appreciated. So I just wanted to pass that correspondence on and tell Mr. Legursky, thank you for his work with this. And, and you know, that's only one of the many agencies that we work with in the county that our people do, our firefighters, everybody. And those are the kinds of messages we get from people that work with them. And, and I think in this time of what's going on in our, our state, our county, we need to be very fortunate that we have the quality of people that we do working for us in all our departments and our elected positions. So I, I'd like a attaboy to go out to everybody and just want those people to know that they have, we've received some communication on them. So thank you for that. Moving on, I'd like to just go over the Wyoming County Commissioner Association Board Meeting. That was a virtual board meeting on September 16th. And from that board meeting, of course, highlights are is the budget was approved by the board for the County Commissioner Association. Within that budget, the building project update, which is a facelift for that building in Cheyenne, that the, the Commissioner Association has purchased, is moving forward. We saw some 3D stuff of it, of the building, and I think it's going to really dress up that building, dress up that location, and it'll be a better representation of the county commissioners throughout the state. We looked at some policy and bylaw reviews regarding voting procedures, staff leaves, benefits, and also talked about some future considerations, which are vehicle use, optional health insurance incentives, policy development guidelines, letter and written statement developments, as well as nominating guidelines. The winter program is, dates are set for December 3rd and 4th in Buffalo. It's a program that, that'll be basically one day with the, next day with, in the morning for the It's a program that, that be basically one day with the next day with, in the morning for the board possibly to meet if, if that times needed. So December third and fourth in Buffalo will be the meeting. Also, they set up a nominating committee for candidates for president, vice president and secretary treasurer. And with that, they have a committee set up. And if anybody, any commissioner wishes to run in any one of those, for any one of those seats within the County Commissioner's Association, they only need to get ahold of Jeremiah or Kelly Little and they'll be able to tell you who, who the individuals are to contact for the nominating committee. Outside of that, that takes care of the board meeting. And with that, that also concludes my report. So any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
I could just follow up on something you said relative to the fires. As you, as you are aware, for years now, we have been, we as a commission have been pushing the forest service in all areas that they need to re- remove the beetle kill trees, et cetera, out of the forest. And I was very pleased to hear the president even talking about that recently. He indicated that we have to clean up our forests before they start burning. Mark and I brought this up with Mrs. Ikov relative to, to the Ashley. And as you know, one of these fires is in the Ashley, one's in the Med Bow. Med Bow has been extremely hit by beetle, beetle kills. And, and I think that I still feel that the commission needs to continue to push that because I think the state would, and the nation would be better off to pay loggers to take those trees out of the forest because they're paying anyway when they start burning. And so I, I've made that case with them on many occasions. And we need to continue to, to hit that. And, and Ms. Ikov was not aware that the president had said that. And he said it on several occasions now. So I think we need to capitalize on, on at least some recognition in Washington that there might be a better way to do it.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I appreciate you bringing that up because in my conversations, I forget who it was with the last couple of days, we talked about the mull and fire in Med Bow. And I, and you might remember this, but a few years ago, there was a opportunity to start cleaning up the Med Bow and the conservatives in that area. I'll save the med, filed injunctions and stuff to stop that work, timbering or whatever. That may have helped maybe prevent some of what's taking place today in the Med Bow. So there, there's are those attempts that are going on and there's more that needs to be done. You're exactly right. And our president's exactly right when he says, yes, we need to clean up our forests because you got to ask yourself, why aren't the forests burning up in Canada and other places? It's because they're cleaned up. You go look at them and they're, they're still, they're cleaned up, but yet they're still wilderness areas and that type of thing. So you're right, you're right on. And, and what's happening in Med Bow is, is you know, I, I still think had that opportunity been allowed. Personally, I believe that had that opportunity been allowed a few years ago for them to clean up that, it may prevented some disasters taking place today. Anyhow, thank you very much for that, Commissioner Johnson. And stand for any other questions before I move on? Commissioner Shane Field.
I actually have an addition to a thank you letter that I'm guessing you probably haven't received for Mike Bornazian and his crew from the Simplot, J R Simplot Company. Absolutely. Thank you. So the, the letter reads, Dear Mike, the J R Simplot Company would like to sincerely thank the Sweetwater County Fire Department for their hard work, dedication and heroism. The swift and aggressive action of your crew saved our facility and in turn our operations during the Richard Mountain Fire earlier this month. Simplot Rock Springs has a significant impact on our local economy and currently employs two hundred and eighty four local residents and contracts with many additional companies in our community. Rock Spring Plant manufactures and distributes fertilizer products throughout our nation to improve, improve crop nutrition and continue to feed our growing world. The hard work of your crews allowed us to continue to keep our employees working and continue to producing and providing the resources our communities need to commit, to continue to produce healthy and productive foods. Thank you again for the work that you do. And that was signed by Brett Pizzato from Simplot.
Thank you. I, I don't recall getting that letter or note from Brett, but I'm glad you brought it up. And I think it's important for all of us, if we get any notes like that for any of our employees, that we pass it on and publicly. Because this is a time where honestly, without these individuals and their hard work, we would be fumbling as a county government. Thank you very much. Any other questions for me? As on my report, thank you. And with that, we'll finish up with Commissioner Smith.
Awesome. Kind of you to save the best for last. I appreciate that.
Always, always.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The airport, I got a report that Devon is diligently was, was the word that I got, that he is diligently working and I, I believe that on funding for the terminal project. He's found a company, one of our company's partners that is doing a work with us currently will carry the upfront costs of the, until the grant is funded. And so that's very helpful. No need to find some funding currently. So, well, that's not quite true. Local match then for us initially has decreased, which is helpful as well. He's going to be reaching out to everybody. He'll be here next meeting on the twentieth, but he's going to be reaching out to each commissioner individually to discuss with them the, the changes and what's going on, inform each of us of what's, what's, what's going on there so that we can be informed before our next meeting. I do, I do just want to float out there. It's not a question we need to answer now, but the thought of perhaps funding our entire portion that we will be, that we've obligated ourselves to sooner rather than later, perhaps this year, as opposed to doing it over the next couple of years. I know things are difficult now. It's, it's also worrisome that perhaps they're even more difficult down the road. So just a thought to, to plant out there, perhaps we, we may want to think about just doing our, our entire portion this year. But for us to discuss later or to, to think about, so just wanted to kind of put that in your minds and, and we'll discuss, discuss that later. Onto the hospital. Much like other places, there has been an increase in tests and positive COVID tests at the hospital. Now, we currently have twenty eight active cases here in Sweetwater County. That's up from just nine last week. So we have, we've, we've seen a spike and it's increasing. A little worrisome. We've done really well here in Sweetwater County. It's something that I definitely keep my finger on the pulse of because of the business I work in and some committees that I'm working on. And so yeah, just, just ask the public to continue to do what you're supposed to, you know, wash your hands, don't pick your nose, do a little distancing, all that stuff. So I'm glad I got Lauren to smile on that one. Good. Getting bids, they are getting bids for the work on projects that have been afforded by the SLIP grants and the CARES Act money. And of course, that has to be completed by the end of December. And so they're working pretty hard on and diligently. I'm making sure that happens. Dr. Lex Auguste is on board now at the hospital, is a new L B G Y N. And Dr. Prachi Pawar is a neurologist. He's also coming in November to join the hospital as well. So happy to see the growth there and filling some gaps in places that we certainly could use some help. So that's awesome to see. We do have a hospital board meeting tomorrow, so I was texting with Irene. I'm, I'm sure there's some double secret stuff that I haven't heard about yet, but I'll find out about it at the, at the board meeting tomorrow. Also, talks with the work on the ambulance and the abandoned vehicle lot continue. And just want to say thanks to all those who are working behind the scenes. There are many who are working on those items and trying to make things happen. So kudos to them. And I, I do greatly appreciate it. And we're getting there. We're, we're moving at the speed of government. So the wheels turn slowly but methodically and we will eventually be there. And then finally, I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm somewhat surprised they still have an office here. So I assume that work is progressing on a commissioner meeting room, our quarters over there. But I'm, I'm guessing by the time I come back for the next meeting here, I won't have an office. But totally happy to sacrifice the office for the, the good of the COVID social distancing and the upgrades we're going to see there. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Any comments, all Commissioners or Commissioner Smith or questions? I have one comment, Commissioner Smith. I, I, I'd be glad to make my office available to you and Commissioner Shane Field and whomever may lose office space. So feel comfortable through this growth period within the courthouse that the governments, federal government's going to pay through, pour forth through CARES Act money. And hopefully will get us back to where all of us wish to be, and that's meeting in person and sitting in a room where we can meet the expectations that are expected through public health and that in order to be safe and keep our constituents safe. So, but anyhow. And second of all, I want you to know.
That's very kind of you.
I'm sorry, I talked over you. Anyhow, with that, our last comment is with every meeting, we save the best for last. You know that. So. With that, there's no more questions. We are a little ahead on our agenda. Our next agenda item is at nine forty and it's nine eleven. Commissioners, it's been a while since we've been to this point. So a break for about, let's come back at about nine, nine thirty. And that's, geez, that's almost fifteen minutes or better. So let's make it nine thirty, be back and we'll move through our agendas. Thank you. Yeah, it's probably not a bad idea. Mr. Smith, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. And when we come back on at nine thirty and come to order, we're going to take a resident call that came in that right at the end when we got off that part of the agenda. So we will probably be back on time with you right at nine forty.
Okay.
If you would please mute your computer, please, for us.
Doing so now. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have Mr. Lance Valentine in the waiting room to give public comment when it reaches.
Okay, we'll call meeting to order at nine thirty, and then I'll ask you to please bring him in, and then we'll ask him to identify himself and who's with. Okay? We'll do it right away.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, commissioners, we'll call this meeting, County Commissioners Meeting for October sixth, back to order. And with that, we did have a commu- citizen, a consensus call come in. And I would like to, at this point in time, recognize that call for us before we move on with our first agenda item. So, Mr. Knight, if you would please put on, I believe, our caller, and if our caller would please introduce themselves and who they're with, please. Can you hear us, Mr. Valentine?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You'll have to speak louder. You sound a little distant away. But please introduce yourself and who you're with, please.
I'm by myself. My name is Lance Valentine. I live down here in the south end of the county in McKinnon. I live on Rocking Chair Lane. I'm calling about a issue that I've been trying to work with the last couple of weeks. I've met with Gene Legursky to talk about it and left a message with Commissioner Johnson's phone. So I appreciate you letting me into the meeting, and good morning to the commissioners and to the staff there. So I've lived down here on Rocking Chair Lane about three years now. And the issue that we're facing is we, the subdivision was originally platted back in the late seventies, I believe seventy-seven, and the road crew and Gene's staff were prepared to help us with some gravel work down here because the road's getting really soft and muddy. But then it was brought to their attention that there's a note that says, "No public road maintenance." And we are petitioning that that be reconsidered because in the late seventies, when this was a subdivision, it was more intended to be boat storage and camping for folks visiting and coming to and from the gorge. Now it's turned into a really nice residence with homes, both full-time homes and part-time homes. And we would really appreciate it if our driveway fees and our covert fees and our taxes go toward some kind of road maintenance down here on Rocking Chair Lane.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Valentine. At this time, I have one question. Go ahead.
One more point I would like to make is before I bought it three years ago in 2017, I visited with the county and that engineering staff, and a couple of comments made, kind of reiterated with me and have stuck with me, is that this subdivision is now intended to be developed into a nicer residence, and they want it to become a much nicer subdivision than it has been. And the homes in the area now reflect that. And the investment the people are putting into their homes now reflects that. And I bought it knowing that it was a public road and knowing that we would have access and wanting to improve it and make it a better subdivision. So that being said, we, and I'm speaking for several of my neighbors, I guess I can legally or officially speak for everybody, but I know that there's many of us down here that are in a position now where we really need some road maintenance, particularly in light of some other recent developments with the gentleman down at the end of the road that was taking care of the road and no longer will.
Okay, thank you. One question for you. Is that road, Rocking Chair Lane, is that a public road or is that a private road? Is that a county road?
It is a public road. It is public platted county road. With only a side note that says, "No road maintenance," and that was from fifty years ago.
So you, you're saying it is a county road?
Yes.
Okay.
I have been reassured that by both Gene and other engineering staff there. It is a Sweetwater County road.
All right, thank you. But this time, I can't comment on it because I'm, I'm not familiar with the history of it and that type of thing. So I just wanted to know if it was in your, from your standpoint, a county road or a public road? And that's, that's the only question I have at this time.
I'm calling at kind of the, well, it was recommended to me by Gene, who I know well through my work. I worked for the Forest Service as the forest engineer, and his road crew and my road crew kind of do a lot of joint work together. So I worked for the Ashley Forest. I live here on Rocking Chair Lane, and I've known Gene for years. So when I've met with him to discuss this, he says, "Well, we were and, and prepared to help you out until it was brought to our attention that there's that note there, and it would be most, or the quickest way to try to get that remedied would be to talk to the commissioners." So that's why the message was left, was left with Commissioner Johnson, and then now calling into this public comment.
Well, thank you, Mr. Valentine. Again, what, what was the note that's on that road on the plat?
On the far left side, and that's just a little side note, it says, "No public road maintenance."
No public road maintenance? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, what historically has been done with, of course, I went there, didn't make that decision. But historically, with subdivisions, not only in Sweetwater County, but in my experience with Fremont County is that there's no road maintenance until such time as I think the seventy-five percent of the lots are built on. So what I would suggest is that, that they petition the Sweetwater County Commission, they being the residents that live, live along Rocking Chair Lane, or whatever it is called, to petition for road maintenance based on what's the history, history has been. And so that we know how many people live there and all of them to sign off on that petition. And at that point, we could review it and make a decision.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I'm glad you recall that, and it's good historical knowledge for us to have. So did you catch that, Mr. Valentine?
I did, yes.
All right. So at this, we'll do a little check in on our end with Gene as well. But if you, as the residents down there, follow Commissioner Johnson's suggestion, hopefully we'll be able to research that a little bit more, and then at some point in time, it may come before the commission, okay?
Hey, I am not aware of Gene attends these meetings with you or not, but he has to have a discussion with the commission, and, and he knows what's being asked of and is wanting to follow up with us and with you. And I would do whatever you ask of us.
Thank you. We, we will have, you know, I think Commissioner Legursky is listening on for this meeting, and we, at some point in time after me, I'll have a conversation and that type of thing. But as Commissioner Johnson suggested on your end, you can begin to work with your neighbors to petition us, and we'll have Mr. Legursky get in touch with you, okay?
Are we pretty sure that seventy-five percent is the number that we're looking for? Because I don't think where did that build out yet. We're probably more in the fifty to sixty-five percent.
I, you know, I've heard this.
But we have a road that, we have a road now that nobody's taking care of. Because the guy with the equipment that was taking care of it is no longer willing to work with anybody. And we have a road that's falling apart, and nobody down here to help us out.
Yeah, I, I've heard what Commissioner Johnson has said prior a few different times during the six years as a commissioner, and that seventy-five percent has come up before, as he just mentioned. So again, too, that is the level that we've talked about. But again, too, it does not prevent you from petitioning the commission at any point in time.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I, I think what he needs to do is, is get whoever is, has built on that, to sign that petition, identify themselves, and then we can look at the plat and make that decision based on that petition.
Very good. Thank you. Did you hear that, Mr. Valentine?
I did.
All right. So with that, it sounds like you're, there's an opportunity for us to continue to work with you and see what results may come forth, and would encourage you to follow along that path. And of course, Mr. Legursky should have some information, and he's available for you to contact. and he's available for you to contact as a resource, okay?
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. We appreciate you.
Thanks for your time and attention. Thank you.
Pardon?
I said, "Thanks for your time and attention. I appreciate it."
Well, thank you for you calling in and we're glad to hear from you and you have a good day out there and please be safe and thank you again.
Hey, thank you.
Okay. Bye-bye now. With that, commissioners, we can move on into our first action item and that is a approval of our motion and board approval of documents amending Lost Creek bond loan of two thirteen. And here to talk with us is Mr. Smith with the mining operation. Good morning, Roger. How are you?
Good morning. I'm very fine. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. And at this time, I'll let you take the floor and you can give us a little background of the mine there, please.
We will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Today, I'm joined by Penny Goplerud, our General Counsel, sitting behind me on my right. Last year, we reported that uranium market conditions were weak and uncertain. I'm sorry to report that market conditions have not approved in the last year. Today, we would like to briefly review Lost Creek's history and discuss recent market activities. In 2013, after investing over fifty million to develop Lost Creek, we borrowed thirty-four million through the Wyoming Industrial Development Bond Program and put Lost Creek into production. In the past seven years, we paid down the principal balance by twenty-one point six million or sixty-four percent. We safely drummed two point six million pounds of uranium at a cash cost of about twenty dollars per pound. We increased our uranium mineral resources at Lost Creek from eleven point two million pounds to nineteen point seven million pounds. We employed as many as sixty workers with an annual payroll of over four million dollars. We paid about sixty million in production-related cash costs, including total payrolls of over eighteen million. We spent about forty million on well field development, much of which went to regional drilling contractors, and we paid about three dollars per pound in ad valorem and severance taxes, or seven point five million in total, of which nearly five million was for county ad valorem taxes. Unfortunately, also in the past seven years, we also watched the long-term uranium price go from fifty dollars to thirty dollars per pound. We saw the spot uranium price drop to as low as eighteen dollars per pound. We watched utility companies cease long-term contracting activities in favor of purchasing cheap foreign-sourced pounds of uranium. In response, we have intentionally reduced production, as have all domestic producers. We have now seen primary production in the United States decline to less than ten thousand pounds in the first quarter of 2020. In fact, the second quarter of 2020 was so low that the United States Energy Information Administration did not publish a number. Twenty twenty's full-year domestic production will basically be nil this year. Meanwhile, in the United States, we consume nearly fifty million pounds of uranium per year in reactors that are licensed for decades at a time. Twenty percent of our U.S. electricity comes from carbon-free nuclear energy. And although we stand ready to ramp up and deliver domestic uranium to the utility companies, this year, domestic suppliers will provide far less than one percent of our U.S. needs. Next year, we will be one hundred percent dependent on foreign imports, with a growing percentage coming from state-sponsored companies supported by geopolitical adversaries. Our allies face the same threat and more production cuts or shutdowns are possible. The U.S. uranium industry is in crisis and our national security is being threatened. In response to this threat, we jointly petitioned the Department of Commerce for relief under Section 232 of the Trade Expansion Act in January of 2018. In our petition, we proposed two sensible and modest solutions, a twenty-five percent quota and a buy-American policy. The cost of the proposal would have been minimal, only about point two percent of an increase to the consumer, or about twenty cents on each one hundred dollar monthly electric bill. The proposal was supported by many, including Wyoming's governor, treasurer, congressional delegation, and county officials, and we thank you for that support. It was also supported by the Department of Commerce when they reported their findings to the President. Unfortunately, not everyone agreed, particularly the utilities who lobbied effectively against it and the President himself. In July 2019, the President stated he did not concur with the Department of Commerce's findings that uranium imports threatened to impair the national security, but he did agree that it is an issue of national security. And he found that a fuller analysis of the considerations with respect to the entire nuclear fuel cycle was necessary, and he formed the U.S. Nuclear Fuel Working Group to develop recommendations for reviving and expanding domestic nuclear fuel production. The working group was composed of thirteen diverse appointees, including seven cabinet members, and the working group was to submit their report to the President within ninety days, which would have been October of 2019. Due to the President's decision not to support the trade action and the uncertainty surrounding the establishment of the working group, the uranium equity markets declined further. And as a result, we requested the deferral of six quarterly principal payments beginning in 2019. The deferral was approved and we remain very grateful for your continued support. Our concern last year about the uncertainty surrounding the working group was justified when the report that was due in October of 2019 was not actually released until April of 2020. The report included recommendations to replenish the American Assured Fuel Supply Reserve and to establish a new uranium reserve. The new reserve would be established through the Department of Energy's proposed budget item to purchase one hundred fifty million pounds of uranium per year for ten years. The report also called for the Department of Commerce to extend the Russian Suspension Agreement to protect against future dumping of uranium into the country. And it asked the Department of Commerce to consider a lower cap limit on those Russian imports. While the report was promising, it lacked definitive details as to implementation plans and timing. So, the uncertainty surrounding the outcome of the working group report remains today. With regard to the one hundred fifty million uranium purchase budget item, the U.S. House Committee on Appropriations specifically noted that it lacked sufficient implementation details. And in July, they decided not to fund the budget item. And they directed the Department of Energy to provide more information within six months. With regard to the working group's recommendation to consider a lower cap on Russian imports, the Department of Commerce ignored the recommendation, at least in the near term. The Russian Suspension Agreement, which was executed just yesterday, actually increases the limits over the next three years. In fact, the first year that actually has lower limits is 2028. This is not good news, but on the positive side, Senator Barasso introduced draft legislation to authorize a uranium reserve in July. And at the same time, Representatives Cheney and Lada introduced similar legislation in the House. And in September, Senators Barasso and Heinrich introduced legislation to extend and expand limits on Russian uranium imports. We very much appreciate Senators Barasso and Representative Cheney's support. However, in summary, the working group was essentially done with its work when it submitted its report in April. Its two chief recommendations, the establishment of the uranium reserves, including the uranium purchase budget item, and the Russian Suspension Agreement lower cap limit, are both in question. The uranium purchase budget item has stalled as we await the Department of Energy's response to the U.S. House Committee on Appropriations. We have no idea what the response will be and what will come of it. The Russian Suspension Agreement extension has been executed and is now complete. And unfortunately, the Department of Commerce did not respect the working group's recommendation to limit the Russian, the Russian cap and will in fact increase it in the near term. The uranium legislation, while promising, will not likely happen before the elections and possibly not before next year. And additionally, if there's a change in administration or a change in the Houses of Congress, it could be delayed further. So, in conclusion, uranium markets remain weak today and the timing of any positive developments in uranium markets is still uncertain. And until the market improves, our financial resources will be stretched and our most significant cost will be the resumption of the bond loan principal payments in Q1 of 2021. At one point three million per quarter for the principal payment, it will have a significant impact on our cash flows, which brings me to our request. At this time, we respectfully request to defer principal payments for an additional six quarters with interest to be paid quarterly as it has been in the past and extending the loan maturity date to October 2024. My understanding is that we have the state's support for our request, but at this time, I would like to ask Penny Goplerud, our General Counsel, for her thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning, Penny. The floor is yours.
As Mr. Smith has described, there is a recognition by the administration and increasingly by a bipartisan group in Congress of the national and energy security threats posed by the current state of the uranium market. Relief, however, continues to take time, particularly in the face of a pandemic and an election year. Our steps leading to today's meeting largely follow the path taken last year. We approached the State Treasurer as the sole bond owner to discuss the state of the uranium industry and our markets and to ask forbearance on principal payments for an additional six quarters to continue to pursue implementation of the relief that we are optimistic will be provided. We were again gratified to learn Treasurer Meyer's continuing support for our industry and specifically for Lost Creek. The Treasurer agreed to the additional deferral of the principal payments. Moreover, Treasurer Meyer requested his staff work with Lost Creek to complete all necessary steps expeditiously. We utilized our transactional documents from 2019 and amended them to reflect the additional deferral of principal for six quarters, again, as Mr. Smith has noted, for a maturity of October 2024. During that time, Lost Creek will continue to make interest payments. The four amending documents were submitted in substantively final form with our meeting request form last week, and I understand that you now have the final execution forms in front of you this morning. They contain one non-substantive conforming edit. The State Treasurer has approved in substantive form these documents and has authorized Lost Creek to represent today that the state is in agreement with these amendments to our bond loan documents. Again, a condition precedent to the amendment to the financing agreement is the state's acknowledgement of the second supplemental indenture as set forth for signature in that document. The State Treasurer's office is standing by for signature. Additionally, you'll recall that the county appointed Zion's Bank Corporation the trustee to our IDB loan arrangement through an indenture in 2013. Zion's Bank Corporation has also approved the deferral, agreed to by the bondholder, and has approved the documents. Zion's also stands ready for signature this morning. We also discussed the amendments and documentation with the county attorney, working with John DeLeon, who we understand is on the call this morning, and understand the county is also supportive, county attorney is also supportive of the continued relief. With that concurrence and approval of the documents by the parties, this morning, we respectfully request the commissioners approve the amendments of the bond loan documents, authorizing the chair to sign and to deliver the second supplemental indenture, the second amendment to the financing agreement, and the amended and restated promissory note. We would be pleased to answer any questions the commissioners have this morning.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for either Penny or Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson?
For a long time, we've been faced with this war on coal and I have felt that the, one of the alternatives would be uranium in the future. And I do think that just because we suffer from a lack of intelligence on part of some people in Washington, I think we're clear-headed and I think we need to make decisions here that will support that industry. There are people in Washington that actually sold uranium to the Russians and I cannot support that and do not understand that. But the Lost Creek people have come to us before. I think they have done the best of their ability to keep things afloat and in spite of the markets that are going on. And I strongly support what they're requesting here. And I think it's time for the nation to wake up and realize that we cannot be dependent upon foreign markets for these critical items that the United States depends on, and one of them is uranium.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Comments are well-taken. Other comments, Commissioners? Commissioners? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you. This is, this would be just relating to the, to the loan payments, not to ad valorem taxes or any other taxes. Is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, sir. That is correct. Just the loan payments, taxes, and the interest payments will continue.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, other comments or questions? No questions at this moment. Mr. DeLeon, you reviewed these and they're similar from last year. You didn't, as their counsel has mentioned, do you see any problem with them?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. And I also did communicate with both the trustees, Zion's Bank, as well as Lisa, Jared Spillman, the attorney for the Treasurer's office, and they are both supportive of the request.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeon. Any other questions? I just got a couple of them at this point in time. First one I ask is even as bleak as the things look at this point in time, Mr. Smith, what's the future for your Lost Creek operations?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'd like to point out is even though we've reduced production at Lost Creek, we've maintained our core staff with the technical competence to ramp up in a relatively short period of time when that decision is made. We could ramp up our operations back to as much as one million pounds per year in a relatively short period of time with initial production commencing within six months of our initial start. The expenditures to do so would be roughly fourteen million dollars during this period of time and I have- And I have no doubt that we would be able to get the funding when market conditions turn around. So to that end, we stand ready to ramp up with our existing production. Initial note, we increased our resources significantly over the past years. So we have quite a bit of resources to continue operations into the foreseeable future. In addition, we're nearly done permitting our Lost Creek ACE and KM amendment, which will give us access to additional resources on the property. And on top of that, we control a significant portion of ground in and around our Lost Creek project with tremendous exploration potential. So for the long term, we believe we can continue to operate Lost Creek profitably into the future. In terms of the market itself, there are a number of factors out there, including typical supply and demand factors. There has been a deficit of supply as compared to worldwide demand for years, and that deficit is growing. In the past, that deficit has been made up with, uh, above ground stocks of material that are dwindling. As those materials dwindle and as that global demand increases, eventually the supply and demand fundamentals have to catch up. In the meantime, though, we're faced with, uh, what I consider unfair market competition from Kazakhstan and other Russian supported countries, which I'm sure the committee is familiar with. And to Penny's point, we will continue to work towards addressing those matters with a hopeful, foreseeable, uh, conclusion where the United States will recognize this problem and address it accordingly.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm glad to know that you, your business plan looks forward to the future. And that's what's in the best interest of, uh, Sweetwater County and state. One other question, last week, the, uh, governor came, or not governor, the president came out with the executive order dealing with, uh, uh, minerals, uh, whether they were, uh, mining minerals or whether they were, uh, oh, hard to get minerals. And as I read through some of that stuff, I, I didn't see much about uranium, but I got a feeling uranium was part of that executive order. What was your thoughts on that?
I agree. It wasn't specifically mentioned that has uranium in the executive order. However, I think it's another indication that the administration is aware that we cannot be dependent on critical minerals that should and do include uranium on foreign source materials. It puts our country at a disadvantage and perhaps even a, a, a threat to our security. And so I think it's encouraging that the president came out with this report and it's just one more step. I believe that as these other matters, the Department of Energy, for instance, the budget item, they'll respond to that. And these things will start to take place, but it is going to take time. Uh, and that's what we're trying to do is make sure that we are still here and ready to ramp up when that time comes.
Thank you. And, and I, I heard that same message a year ago when you came before us, and I'm glad to hear that message again today and appreciate that. And thank you for being patient and listening and answering my questions. Commissioners, any other questions at this point in time? With no further questions, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
I'm pleased to make a motion to approve the second amendment to the finance agreement between Sweetwater County, Wyoming and the Lost Creek ISR LLC, a Wyoming limited liability company, and authorize the chairman to sign the required documents.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, um, as presented and authorized chairman to sign by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
I'll second the second.
Commissioner, second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion, Commissioners? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And Penny and Rogers, thank you for joining us this morning. And, uh, we appreciate what you do for Sweetwater County. And, uh, really appreciate the fact that you're hanging in there. So thank you very much and, uh, good luck moving forward. Stay safe.
Chairman and Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
With that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is, uh, Ms. Bonnie Berry, um, for approval of the audit arrangement letter. Ms. Berry, good morning. Glad to see you.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, we received the audit arrangement letter last month. And, um, I hope you had a chance to review it. It is in the packet. Um, if you recall, you did sign a contract extension with our auditors, MHP, back earlier um, in the year. It's a three-year contract extension and, um, it did provide that they would audit our financial statements uh, for the year ending June 30th, 2020, uh, for the amount of 82,500. So this is, that's the amount on the audit arrangement letter that they have provided to us. Um, so I'm just here to ask for your approval of this audit arrangement letter and ask if you have any, um, questions on the terms.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Commissioners, any questions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
Has there been any increase in the, in the terms, any change to the terms, Bonnie?
Increase as far as the price?
Yes, and any other issues?
Um, so the increase, I, I don't believe there was an increase from last year to this year. Um, they have put in small increases, uh, for the next two years. I believe if I remember correctly, next year will be 85,000. And the following year will be slightly higher than that. I believe it's about 2,500 a year with the amount of the increase over the three-year period. But I don't believe there was an increase from last year to this year, if I remember correctly. I could check and follow up on that.
I trust your memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other questions, Commissioners? Uh, Ms. Berry, I have a question with regard to the audit, uh, as I recall and I looked through it, that type thing. If there's additional grants and that type of thing as we're going on with this COVID, if they're part of the audits, could that possibly increase our price? By year's end?
It could, um, if there is additional work, it could. Um, and as you know, we are getting, um, we are getting CARES Act funding that is, uh, allowable for previous expenditures. Um, I hope that it won't. I hope that it won't amount to too much additional work. Um, we have already, um, the auditors have already completed the portion of fieldwork for, for of the component units. Um, so we will have to, I will have to do some journal entries to correct that possibly for CARES Act money we've received that will affect the expenditures from last year that can be applied to those grants. Um, but hopefully it will be very minimal and hopefully it won't increase the cost. Um, I don't know if you remember, but earlier when we signed the extension, they did, um, provide a, a small amount for an increase, uh, possibly for bonding. Cause I know at that time we were considering bonding, um, for the Lagoon facility project, which that won't be an issue this year. Uh, because we aren't getting bonding for it, or we haven't received bonding for it as of June 30th. Um, so that won't be an issue, but there is a possibility of a slight increase, but I'm hoping there won't be. I'm hoping it'll be very minimal. And we can just go in and, and do the journal entries, um, if needed to correct that CARES Act funding. Um, the financial statements have not been prepared yet. I don't prepare those until um, usually the end of October, early November is the timeframe I prepare the financial statement. So those haven't been prepared yet. So nothing will need to be changed on that. It's just a matter of, um, possibly reclassifying some expenses to some grant expenditures.
Okay, thank you very much. Other questions, Commissioners? No further questions, Commissioners? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shainfield.
I'll make, um, a motion to approve the audit arrangement letters presented.
And authorize chairman to sign?
And authorize chairman to sign.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Lloyd. Further discussion, Commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Bonnie. You have a good day and good seeing you. Thanks for joining us. As we move on, we'll move on to Tab E, which is our assessor, Mr. Devis, with, uh, valuation estimates for the tax year 2021. Good morning, Mr. Devis. Uh, thank you for joining us.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, I'm going to attempt to share my screen. This is the first time for this, so I don't know if you have to do anything at your end. I am trying to share that screen. Can you see that presentation now?
No.
How about?
There we go. Here we go.
Okay.
Yep, it's there.
Perfect. All right. I think we got past our first hurdle. So, okay. Um, you guys have requested, um, valuation estimates in the past and it's a very legitimate request. What I normally do is give you dollar amounts, give you a spreadsheet. It's not, it's good information, but I thought this time I would actually do a presentation that might answer some questions that you have or actually create some new questions. Um, maybe just have a better understanding of this whole process. So that's why you're getting a presentation today rather than just numbers on a spreadsheet.
Thank you.
So here we go. Okay, if I was a commissioner, the first question I would want to ask is where do the mineral estimates come from? The answer to that is the Wyoming Department of Revenue, specifically the Mineral Tax Division, provides this information to county assessors across the state, to at least the counties that do have minerals. When a producer severs a mineral from the ground, they do pay severance tax to Department of Revenue. Severance tax is paid monthly to the Department of Revenue and the values that are used for those severance tax numbers are the same values that are used for the county assessor in our valuation process, the budgeting process, and then for the bills that are actually sent out by the treasurer in September. And at any point, if anybody has any questions, please stop me. I'll be happy to answer anything. Um, one of the confusing issues for mineral valuation is the timeline. So we are currently in the production year of 2020. So January through December is that production year. That production in this calendar year is actually what's used in the valuation process for the following tax year. And again, those tax years are billed by the treasurer in September. So one of the phrases you'll hear a lot is in Wyoming, production can be billed as much as 18 months in arrears for the ad valorem part, the part that's related to value that we bill here at the county. And that is true. And this kind of explains that if you had a mineral that was severed from the ground in January of 2020, that tax bill for that mineral would not be sent out until September of 2021. And that's kind of the flaw in the system, but that's the process that we're currently under. Okay, so here's my standard disclaimer. Estimates are just that.
Can I interrupt there?
Commissioner Smith, go ahead.
What was the, um, I know there were something can't make through the legislature. There are some things introduced. Did anything pass on changing, uh, changing that timing? I, I, I don't recall.
It did. And it was House Bill 159, but it has been kind of, um, kind of a mess to say the least. Um, Rob will use a little harsher terms when he talks about House Bill 159. What it was supposed to do was, was have these mineral companies paid monthly to the county treasurer or the department of revenue. And that's kind of where the rub happened. Um, what the department of revenue said it was supposed to be paid to the counties. The county said it was supposed to be paid to the department of revenue. And I think they're still trying to sort that out. According, Rob and I talked just briefly yesterday. And, uh, he was under the impression that none of those collections have started. So until they get the kinks worked out of that legislation that was passed, we are still under this system.
Do you anticipate that happening anytime soon, late, ever?
Um, it's an issue more for the Treasurers than it is for the assessors. So Rob would have a better idea of if there's any resolution that's coming potentially. Um, but at this point, it sounds like it's very convoluted. This, this legislation seemed very rushed. And, um, there wasn't a lot of understanding on the parties who were gonna end up responsible for this. One thought one was gonna do it and one thought the other was gonna do it. And then when it was over, nobody knew who was gonna do it. So it was, it was just very confusing legislation. I'm hoping there's some language that clears that up soon.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, um, again, my standard disclaimer, estimates are just that, estimates. Had to make some assumptions in these calculations and the, the first assumption was right now I have six months worth of data. So I have the mineral values provided to me by the Mineral Tax Division, January through June. Everything is reported a quarter behind. So I'll get January through September in January of next year. So there is quite, there's a little bit of a lag in those numbers getting to the assessor's office. But with six months of data, it seemed reasonable to just multiply those values times two to get the estimates for the entire year. Hopefully the numbers change over the next quarter, um, but we won't know that until we get those numbers in January. Now, the other assumption I used, I did a 20% reduction for the locally assessed property in, in the county. Now, there are two types of assessments. There's locally assessed and state assessed. The state actually assesses all the minerals that we're talking about currently. But they also assess all the utilities in the county as well. Utilities can include railroad companies, airline companies, gas distribution companies, pipeline companies, the electrics, telephone companies, satellite companies, those kinds of things. So anything that would be considered a utility, the state values them as well. And just to give you a little perspective, utilities last year were just over $200 million in value, where the minerals were $1.3 billion in value. So the minerals drive our valuation and we'll talk about that in just a second. Um, the 20% reduction in the locally assessed, the locally assessed is what we do here. Now, please don't misunderstand. I'm not saying the housing market is down by 20%. What I'm saying is the values that we have for residential commercial values will value those in-house, but the industrial sites are also part of that locally assessed number. Those industrial sites are valued by an appraisal company we use. Um, they actually have started their appraisals in the fall and will have better numbers next year. But just like what the Lost Creek guys were talking about, COVID had a major, major fact, was a major factor in their production, their capability. So those industrial sites that may have had those same effects, I put up 20% reduction on those locally assessed properties and it was more for the industrial sites. It was for the Trona mines, the coal mines, the gas processing facilities, um, Simplot facility. I don't know that there's any factors yet. It's too soon to tell. We just started having our conversations with those industry people. But I wanted to, you know, it's that story, plan for the worst and hope for the best. So that's where this number comes from. And just for reference, the locally assessed number last year was just under 800 million. So it is a large amount. I've reduced it quite a bit. I will have a better idea when I update these numbers in January for you. Whether this, this number is too pessimistic or not pessimistic enough, but that will be updated at our, in our next conversation.
Dave?
Yes, sir.
Does that include the Bridger Power Plant?
The Bridger Power Plant, yes, is part of that, that industrial process that those, those values, um, are handled by our industrial appraisers. Yes.
What would happen in the event that, uh, the Bridger Rock Mountain Power is successful in shutting down two of the, two of those units? How do you handle that?
What would happen? And again, we don't value it in-house. It's done with our appraisal firm. Um, we had a conversation about that a while ago. What would happen is there would be, um, what in our world, what we call an obsolescence factor to those two um, units that they have closed down. They're no longer producing. They're no longer providing value to the facility. So that value would be reduced. I mean, I can't give you a number right now off the, off the top of my head, but there would be a reduction for that industrial site if those two units were out of production.
Obviously, obviously it's roughly 50% of their production capability.
Yeah, and it would, there would be some, I mean, it would depend on how the, the facility is. I, I don't know if those two units could be, you know, if you could tie those to exactly half. I mean, there's a lot of auxiliary facilities at the plant site that would use the two remaining units. So maybe it's not quite half. Maybe it's a third or something like that. But again, that was something that our appraisal firm would actually dig into very deeply when that, if, if and when that did happen.
Thank you.
Um, Dave, either, either way, just comment on Commissioner Johnson's thinking is, uh, no matter how much it is, it's going to be significant.
Yes, absolutely. We will, we will notice that. Absolutely. And I will keep track. If that gets to the point where that's an issue, we will have the value than the prior year and then we will value the current year after that happens and we'll, we'll know exactly what that number is.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, this slide really just kind of shows the history of the valuation and how important minerals are to Sweetwater County. Um, you can see in 2015, uh, we were just under $3 billion in valuation. Okay, 2021, we're estimating to be a 1.8. So in less than, in about six years, our evaluation went from, it went down a billion dollars. And that's a significant number. Um, you can see the trend. I mean, we, we, we were extremely high in 2015. And that's a significant number. Um, you can see the trend. I mean, we, we, we were extremely high in two thousand and fifteen, and I've got another slide that's going to show you why. But two thousand and twenty one, you know, that curve from twenty to two thousand and twenty one, again, if our estimates are accurate, that's a pretty steep drop from one year to the next, but you can see it's all driven by minerals. When the minerals go down, the value gets pulled down with it. Okay, here's another interesting slide as well. As we're putting this stuff together, I didn't originally have two thousand and fifteen in here, but I'm glad I talked to Rob, and he asked me to put it in. You can see in two thousand and fifteen, gas, the natural gas value in Sweetwater County by itself was about eight hundred and fifty five million dollars. Gas prices were high, production was going crazy, and that valuation was literally off the charts, literally off the charts. But you can see the big drop the following year. Um, that's, you know, oil and gas has always been, been very, very susceptible to market conditions, outside forces at the Middle East, those kinds of things. We always do that. It was always going to be cyclical like that. Um, the one that scares me the most on this chart is the Trona value. You can see over time, Trona was, like I said, it was untouchable. No matter what was going on with any of the other industries, Trona was basically just chugging along. Last year, the value for Trona was just under five hundred million by itself, and, and that is just Trona production. That's not the facilities included. That's just Trona production. You can see the drop off. What we're estimating that number to be about three eighty as far as, um, the number this year. Now, during our initial COVID conversations we were having, um, the Trona industry was telling us it was going to take six to eight quarters for that industry to recover. Only time will tell, but we're hoping it's sooner rather than later. But this, to me, this is the, the, the most interesting slide we have, just simply because of that gas value from two thousand and fifteen. It just, that, that's, that's almost ridiculous. It almost looks like a typo. It's so high. Okay, my next question that came up while I was putting this together for you was, okay, I'm talking about property taxes, so how much property, how much revenue does property taxes represent for the general fund? Now, this is not the entire twelve mil. This is just the general fund. So I want to be specific here that this is just what funds core county government. Okay, I got these, this information from Bonnie. Um, the revenues that we received last year, and the total for, for this slide was about thirty five million dollars. So you had thirty five million dollars in revenue going into the general fund. Of that, twenty million dollars was property taxes. That's fifty nine percent. So you've got other factors as well, of course. You've got sales tax, severance tax. The horse racing is a bigger number than what I thought it was going to be. Motor vehicle registration fees are a bigger number than I thought. Um, everything else was not insignificant, but when you added them all together, it was only about three million dollars. That's that other category. Um, but twenty million dollars of your revenue this year came from property taxes. Now, this is another point where I caution you just a little, you know, this twenty million dollars is, is numbers on paper. I'm very concerned with bankruptcies that are coming from these companies. Um, I don't know that every dollar billed is going to be collected. Um, bankruptcies may be significant, they may not, but it's something you need to be aware of. Just because we say we're going to get twenty million dollars doesn't mean we're actually going to receipt twenty million dollars. There is something that, there's another part of that process that has to happen, and they have to actually get to the point where they pay that bill. I'm hoping we don't have any issues, but the trend seems to be going the other way. Okay, and this is the most troubling slide I think I can show you. Okay, tax year two thousand and twenty versus tax year two thousand and twenty one. Okay, so this is the twelve mil. So this is everything that you fund under the twelve mil. This will include all of the component units as well. It includes, uh, the events complex, library, Southwest Counseling, all of those component units are made up in here as well. For the two thousand and twenty tax year, our valuation was two point three billion, and you multiply that times the twelve mils, and you actually had twenty eight million dollars that you were able to allocate for the general fund and for all of the component units as well. Okay, this coming year, again, with six months' worth of data, the valuation, at least now, is projected to be at a one billion, eight hundred and fifty million. And when you do the math on that, that equates to twenty two million dollars worth of revenue, twenty two million dollars worth of property taxes to be able to apply to those, those agency funds and the general, and the general fund. Okay, last year, when you balanced the budget, from what I understood, the ballpark number for what you had to do, you, using cash carryover and reserves, you had ten million dollars you had to come up with last year. All things being equal, if you fund things exactly the way you did last year, that ten million dollar shortfall turns into sixteen million dollars for your shortfall. I just want you to be aware when you go into that process. And again, we only have six months' worth of data for the minerals, but it is something you need to be aware of, and I think the timing is sooner rather than later. It's just something that, that was kind of sobering for me as well. Now, I hate to end pro, end presentations on a bad note, and there is just a little bit of positive news. So if you can see on this chart that I provided, this is as of this morning. Uh, you, if you look at the, this is the actual, um, the natural gas prices at Opa. This is where most of the production in Sweetwater County goes, and you can see January of two thousand and twenty through maybe July or August of two thousand and twenty, the dollar amount was not great. We were under two dollars for that, almost that entire period. And then August, September, until like two days ago, everything was actually trending up more closer to the two fifty range. Um, I don't know what happened with the big drop. That happens every once in a while. Um, it'll come back and settle, I'm pretty sure, but, um, you can see what we had before that, though. You can see January of two thousand and twenty prior, those values were well above two dollars and fifty cents, almost three, three fifty at one point. So we've got some making up to do. Hopefully, the winter, um, there'll be some increased demand, the price will go up, um, we'll see those numbers increase a little bit. They were trending that way, and that will be reflected in those values that we have for the natural gas in the next quarter, but we just don't have that data yet. So at this point, you know, there, there might be some positive news out there, but I, I just wanted you to be aware. Um, when I present next time, like I said, I'll have nine months' worth of data rather than just the six that we currently have. It'll be better information. We'll have a better idea on that locally assessed number. We'll be able to hone in on this a little closer, I think, with the next presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Commissioners, any questions for our assessor?
Dave, uh,
Commissioner Johnson?
Dave, do you happen to know how many rigs are working in Wyoming today?
I believe the number is one, and it is not in Sweetwater County.
Well, last information I had, there were four more that would be operating shortly, so we'll see what happens. That might be reflective in your graph here.
Let's hope so.
So, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Smith, I think you have a question?
Yeah, Dave, do you have any insight, uh, idea why something like, um, like a Genesis is, uh, struggling more than, than a Jinnor, where they're continuing forward, although somewhat delayed with like expansion, while Genesis has, uh, you know, had some furloughs and things. Is that due to contracts or, or do you have any insight into that at all, or is that kind of beyond your scope?
It, it's kind of beyond my scope. One thing that comes to mind when you ask a question like that is, is who owns the company? I do believe Genesis is owned by a gas land, uh, natural gas pipeline company. I think Genesis is actually a company out of Texas. It's a, it's a US-based company, where Jinnor is actually an international company. I believe it's out of Turkey. I don't know if that has any factor in this at all. I don't know if that's something where, you know, it, it makes a difference on their capital expenditures. I don't have any idea. Um, we are going to have, like I stated, stated earlier, we're having our, um, in a typical year, we go out to all of the, the plant sites, and we actually have inspections. We talk to the accountants, we talk to the general managers, we find out what's going on. Um, it's a question I could have asked at that point, but we're doing all of this via Zoom or Google Meet or something this year, but it is a question, um, that I can investigate a little bit and see what's going on. It, it, and sometimes they're not willing to share. So we are, we have some very, some companies that are, are very forthright. They, they just flat out tell you what they're doing, and it's great. We have some that kind of skirt around with their plans for the next year, um, and it's, it's, you know, justifiable. I don't, I don't have any issue with it, but it's just different. We get different information from different companies. But those inspections, even though they're, um, via the computer, those are going to start in the next week or so, but that is a question that I can kind of see if I can get a little information on, because I, I was interested in that as well, because I know Jinnor just kept their foot on the pedal, seemed like. I mean, they didn't have any slowdown plans. They didn't have any layoffs, or Genesis and some of the others did. So, and, and it may be the international component. I, I just don't know.
I was wondering if it's, uh, contracts perhaps, like who they're selling to, and perhaps that industry wasn't hurt nearly as badly or slowed down as much by COVID, or just, just out of curiosity, so that, uh, you know, as we see the slowdown, perhaps, when will we see the rebound back is, is kind of why I'm asking, so, so.
Sure.
Jeff, uh, it possibly could be future sales, too. They might have contracts that are locked in future sales prices.
Right.
Thank you. Commissioners, commissioners, other questions for Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis, I have a couple of questions. Uh, you'd commented general fund funds, uh, of course, our core government, but as well as our, uh, component units, but it also funds our outside agencies, does it not?
Yeah, when I talk about the twelve mil, I'm talking about everybody that you allocate funding for. So, uh, events complex, um, the library, the hospital, I mean, all of that kind of stuff that's under the twelve mil, absolutely. But if you are paying other agencies, outside agencies as well out of the general fund, yes, it would actually, um, affect them as well. That twenty million dollars that we talked about for property taxes, if that declines, that's going to affect all those agencies that you support, um, the human service agencies, those kinds of things. So when I talk about the component units, I'm talking about the units that you actually specifically apply a mill levy to the county valuation, and then they generate their fund through the property tax. They're actually listed on the tax bills that the individual see. You'll actually see the general fund, and then you'll see, um, the events complex, you'll see Southwest Counseling, you'll see the library, all of those. So it's, it's, those ones are actually a levy times a value to create a tax amount. What you find out of the general fund, like I said, that could be, um, all the human service agencies, the the senior centers, all of those agencies that you fund just out of the general fund. Those would be part of that general fund breakdown.
Thank you. Thank you for clar, clarifying that. Um, that, I think, um, I, I think this was a good presentation, good information for us and other commissioners. If you've got questions, just jump in. Um, Commissioner Lloyd, I see you took your mute button off. Do you have questions?
Not so much a question, but more of a statement, if that's okay.
Sure.
All right, I'm, I, I first want to thank, um, um, Assessor Davis for the information, and then also, he's taken some time with me over the last two or three weeks, and some of the status come out to break it down, then also Treasure Slaughter for that time to be able to talk and look at this. And I just think that, um, you know, when, when I, when I got the information that, um, since two thousand and fifteen, we're at a billion dollars less than tax valuation, that, that assessed valuation, that's a pretty daunting number and a, and, and a huge, I don't know, brings a little bit of a red flag to me and, um, of a concern, and I, and I have had a chance to speak with Chairman, um, Wendling like this, and I think this information only boasts is something we had talked earlier in the year about, uh, when we talked about budget was we really need to be proactive in moving forward and, um, coming up with ways to be strategic in and, and really put some time and effort into determining this upcoming budget and preparing for it, and preparing other people for it, because the number is daunting, and I think that, um, we need to look at ways to become efficient. We need to waste to look at partnering. We need to look at all avenues as we go through this budget, because it really is, it's a large, it's a very, it's a large task that we're going ahead of us, and I think it all starts with a proactive approach, and, and then I think one of the things that Assessor Davis said was sooner rather than later, and I, and I have broached that with Commissioner Wendling and have faced, um, we will do that, but I just think as a board, we have our, we really have our work cut out for us, and we have a, a large task ahead of us to figure this out.
Yeah, just one more comment that I would have as well, you know, it, it, I don't think this is going to be a quick turnaround either. I think the effects of this are going to last not only into your next budget cycle, but I think if the valuation from the next budget cycle from this amount to the following year, if it stays even, I think we had a huge win. I'm not expecting a quick turnaround by any means. It would take something, you know, out of the realm of possibility, out of something that we're not used to for, to see a huge, huge turnaround. Um, usually when we see big ups and downs in value, it's usually, usually due to natural gas, oil values, that kind of stuff, and that's something I just don't see changing in a heartbeat like it used to. I think, you know, we're going to be in this mode and this valuation number, this budget cycle, these conditions, I think for at least a couple, maybe two or three years. You know, I don't have a crystal ball either. I know Rob tells you that all the time. But I don't think this is going to just be a one-year deal. This is something that's going to last for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. You know, I, I have to agree with you. Uh, I, I don't, uh, when I take a look at and listen to what's happening at state level, it doesn't look good there. Um, and I think we only mirror exactly what's at state level. The unfortunate thing about it is the state has a deeper um, reserve and pool of money for them to withdraw to continue doing business, or the county is very limited to, to where they can draw on their reserves. Um, I think, uh, my next question is, is you talk about third quarter numbers. How, how soon will you have those third quarter numbers where you can, uh, bring us up to date?
I will have those numbers. Um, the, the production numbers will be January through September at that point, but I won't get those until January. There's a, a three-month lag time uh, between the time the Department of Revenue gets the severance tax numbers and the time that they're able to give those numbers out to the county assessors. Now, that sounds like a long time, and it sounds like a huge delay, and I understand where you're coming from, but there was a time where we didn't get these numbers at all. What we had to do was rely on producers to give us, you know, dollar amounts, and it was, it was literally handwritten on a report they had to file with the assessor, and the, 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 the data was not accurate by any means at all. So even though there's a delay in this information, this is really good information. We are within one, two, three percent of our estimates versus actuals when we actually get to the end of the year with these. And getting them to us the way they do i- has been a huge benefit to us. I, I understand we want them faster, but at this point, getting them the way we are is a huge, huge benefit, because it's more accurate, it's more consistent. I was coming from a better source. So I, I, I apologize for the, the delay. It's out of my hands, but I will have that information for you early January.
Yeah, I, I think it becomes important then for us, especially if we as a board are trying to be proactive as we go into our next fiscal budget and that type of thing, that we get acting as quick as possible, but I want to encourage the board to act on, um, data and, and rather than anything else, you know, and a, if third quarter data, which is written, uh, you know, actual data, um, would be great to have to see, see what the trend is. Um, but in the meantime, uh, um, I think at that point, it might be important that we have a presentation again for you, an update. But I'd like to see, uh, Rob Slaughter, our treasurer, included in that, because I think uh, there'll be some information there. They can help us with, uh, his thoughts where sales tax and those things are at to give us a better picture. Um, but at this time, I, I really think, uh, all indications are that, uh, it's not going to be a quick turnaround, that it's, it's going to continue to up and down more on the negative than it is on the positive for us. And I think it's a good time, even though we're only three months into our, uh, fiscal year, just a little more than that, for our, um, elected offices for core government, our departments, as well as uh, component units, outside agencies, and I'd just like to reach out to them at this point in time, everybody. And sense, send a sense of, uh, notice to them that, uh, it is now a time right now to really look, delve into their budgets and take a look at, uh, only spending money uh, that is, uh, needed and necessary for their operations and, uh, look hard at how they spend their dollars and, uh, for the lack of the word, uh, right for the brand. And the brand of Sweetwater County and looking ahead to the future for finances and to, uh, become a partner in, uh, making sure that, uh, we're protecting our revenues as much as we can as we move forward and, uh, certainly encourage everyone to caution in how they spend their dollars, because uh, if we look at the numbers at the next time, we as a commissioner may have to come up with a plan to, uh, begin working early with budgets and having conversations very early with, uh, uh, our core government as well as department chairs, departments, as well as component units and agencies. So I, uh, I just really sense based on your report and based on what we've been watching over the last three months and what's been said in industry as far as their recovery time, it's time to reach out now, and it's time to, uh, for the lack of better words, uh, tighten up, and I would encourage everybody to do so. So that's my final comments. I, I do appreciate your pres- tighten up and I would encourage everybody to do so. So that's my final comments. I, I do appreciate your presentation and I, I do look forward to the next one. I hope it's better, you know, anything that's the same or better is an improvement and look forward to visit, having you and Mr. Slaughter come forward and talk with us again in the near future. Commissioners, any other comments before we say, bid farewell to Mr. Davis? With that, thank you, Mr. Davis. Have a great day and be safe out there, and we appreciate what you do for the county.
Thank you very much.
All right, Commissioners, moving on, moving into next order of business is, is authorization of a special prosecutor. And Mr. De Leon, I believe you're out there. The floor is yours.
Yes, Commissioners, as you know, the county attorney's office is responsible for reviewing and potentially prosecuting criminal cases in the county. Sometimes when conflicts arise, and we will ask the Commissioners to appoint a special prosecutor. That's the resolution that you have before you. And being that a conflict has in fact arisen, we would ask that you approve the resolution and that you approve that the board as a whole sign that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. De Leon regarding the authorization of a special prosecutor? With no questions, I would ask the Commissioners, what's their pleasure regarding resolution 2020 dash 10 dash CC dash 01, authorization of a special prosecutor?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson?
I make motion to approve resolution number 2020 dash 10 dash CC dash 01, a resolution authorizing the appointment of a special prosecutor as requested.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
By Commissioner Shane Field. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Looks like you've got your special prosecutor, Mr. De Leon. Thank you. Moving forward, we move into our next agenda item, and that's Tab G, which is approval of the coronavirus relief grant agreement subcontract with Southwest Counseling, and with us is Ms. Marshall, our grant writer, and Ms. Laura Schmidt Pizzato. Good morning, Laura. Christina, thank you for joining us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Before I start this agenda item with Laura Schmidt Pizzato from Southwest Counseling, I wanted to take a quick moment to backtrack about the CARES Act money that you spoke about during Commissioner comments. So just to be clear, the, the state received CARES Act money and originally for the cities, towns, counties, healthcare facilities, it was a first come, first serve type of application process. They since changed that and approved allocations to entities. So originally, you, you may have heard some numbers, but based on recommendations from the Wyoming County Commissioners Association, the State Loan and Investment Board, actually for Sweetwater County approved a lower formula. So just to be clear, our formula was based on population, number of COVID cases, and then economic hardship. The county's allocation is exactly $6,015,029. I would like to state that there were multiple types of healthcare facilities that received also allocations, hospitals, long-term care skilled nursing facilities, assisted living facilities, federally qualified health centers, rural health clinics, and home health agencies. If you would like specifics of any of those allocations, I would be happy to discuss those with any entity. Their allocations, it's not a debit card. It is for only necessary expenditures that must be approved through a grant process. So please let me know. But with that, I would like to move into today's agenda item and to point out that out of those healthcare facilities I listed, mental health was not included. So I'm very pleased to let you know that Sweetwater County was awarded $131,079 in Corona coronavirus relief grant funding. That's the CARES Act through the state, and it will be passed through to Southwest Counseling Service. There is no required cash match, and all the expenses must be submitted and received by the Office of State Lands by December 15th. This is a source of contention for everyone. The contract says we can expend it through December 30th, but the rules are stating they have to receive it. This was discussed at last week's SLIM meeting, and basically they're saying, well, we want it by December 15th so that we can reallocate unexpended funding, but what that's doing is pushing up construction completion dates and so forth. So as you know, this funding is to deal with the, the current healthcare, the health emergency related to COVID. Southwest Counseling will use this for telehealth equipment, My Health Point Portal, which is to help, to, to provide self-help resources to their clients 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and also for personal protective equipment. Southwest Counseling did incur expenses under this grant prior to July 1st. That will be included in the current audit report, but they are reimbursable after this agreement gets executed. And with that, I will ask Laura if she'd like to add anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just, what I'd like to just say is thank you for your support of Southwest Counseling throughout the years, and especially this year when we are really struggling to continue our services and continue to serve as many people as we possibly can in a, a safe environment as possible. So I, I just really, don't really have much to add. I just want to express my, my gratitude.
Thank you, Laura. We appreciate what you do there at Southwest Counseling for our people of Sweetwater County and neighboring counties that you serve as well. So Commissioners, any questions for either Ms. Marshall or Ms. Schmidt Pizzato? With no questions, what's your pleasure, Commissioners? Free money.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Field.
I will make a motion to approve the coronavirus relief grant agreement and the subcontract with Southwest Counseling Service as presented. And I'm not sure if it's chairman only signed, but an authorized term and a sign if needed.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, Commissioners? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Good job. Thank you very much, Christina. Thank you, Laura. You guys have a good day. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next will be a Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation, and we do have with us, I believe, Ms. Bass and Ms. Congdon. Did I say that right, Tenessa?
Tenessa Congdon.
Thank you.
Boss.
And Melinda Boss. Okay, welcome, and glad you ladies are able to join us this morning, and the floor is yours. Melinda or Tenessa? Melinda, you're muted. Thank you.
I forgot to do both things. Thank you very much for enlightening us to present, but I'm going to let Tenessa take the lead for this for the moment, and then I'll fill in in the end.
Thank you. Tenessa, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Good morning. It's good to see you guys over Zoom. We have a proclamation that we would like to present, and we will allow you to read that when we're done. I just have some stats and some information to share in the beginning. So I'm Tenessa Congdon. I am the CFC Director with YWCA of Sweetwater County. And each year, the National Network to End Domestic Violence conducts a 24-hour survey each year. In 2019, U.S. Domestic Violence Programs served 77,226 victims and answered 19,159 crisis hotline calls in one day alone. So high-profile cases may make the headlines, but thousands of people experience domestic violence each day. More often than not, domestic violence happens behind closed doors and may not be visible to the public or even close family members and friends. However, YWCA serves hundreds of victims each year in Sweetwater County. In 2019, YWCA served 357 clients. Additionally, we provided 1,187 shelter nights. Advocates responded to 1,299 crisis calls, and a total of over 13,000 services was provided throughout Sweetwater County. So each year, we return to you to request that the month of October be Proclaim Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We desire for the community to know that domestic violence happens in our community, but more importantly, want to reach out to those that may be experiencing domestic violence and let them know that services are available. Throughout COVID shutdowns, we've been open the entire time. We've had advocates working from home, do it, working in the office by appointment only. We are now back in the office for several months and continuing to serve clients as Laura Schmidt Pizzato stated, in the safest way possible. So providing those much-needed services. Victims of domestic violence are hit hard with COVID abuse happens at home, and that exacerbates the problem for some. So we, we are proud to say that we've continued serving clients throughout this while protecting staff at the same time. But we want, we want victims to know that the abuse is not their fault, and they're not alone. Advocates are available 24/7. And with that, I would also like to thank you for your continued support over the, over the years that you've been funding and supporting our program and listening to our proclamations twice a year for domestic violence and sexual assault. We, we appreciate your support. And I'll turn it over to Melinda Boss. She's the executive director, and she's going to talk about some events that we have coming up.
Thank you. Thank you, Tenessa. Melinda?
Yes, thank you very much. So we wanted to let you know about two different events. One gets mentioned in the proclamation, but I'll just highlight it. It is the 20th, and we are going to do our usual vigil. It looks a little different because we're trying to set it up in COVID-safe mode. And so what it is, it's a drive-by event. So you can come down to Bunning Park, starting at the J Street entrance, and you drive around, and we will have the silhouettes displayed there that you can then see them. You'll be given a booklet that tells the story of the 11 victims that have been killed since the 1980s in Sweetwater County. And there are many of you that probably will recognize some of those names when you hear them. They are Common Rock Springs names. They've lived here for years. And so we do this as a tribute for that and awareness of what it is. The second event is actually being put on by a group of family and friends of Whitney Sewell. She was just recently killed due to domestic violence. It's an interesting situation because it doesn't automatically look like it. There wasn't calls for the police. There wasn't history of physical abuse. It was a lot of control. And it shows how emotional and mental and all that psychological control has such a stronger impact. That is why victims stay. That is why the danger. We always say, why don't they just leave? This is why. You don't see it as abuse. You don't see it as the effect it has every day of someone telling you, you can't get away. And you have no competing narrative, so you don't have any way to look at it. That was the life for Whitney. Her family wants to do this as a memorial because just about a year ago, her husband shot her and then himself. And so this was the end. So on the 17th, they are hosting a 5K run walk in her memory. It's going to start at the Park Hotel at noon. So you can come a little bit beforehand because there is some products available. There's silent auction, and then you can walk with your group as socially distanced as you wish. There are certainly items to buy and to donate, and the funds do come back to help the YWCA as portions of that. So I really want to encourage people to take a step. You'll see signs all over the community saying, stand against domestic violence. Those are our signs trying to help raise community awareness for this very hidden but important issue that affects our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Thank you, Tenessa. Commissioners, at this point in time, I would ask if there's any questions for either Tenessa or Melinda, and following our questions, I would ask if maybe their former employee from the YWCA, Commissioner Shane Field, if you have a copy of the proclamation, if you'd like to read it when we're done with questions, please. So I'll open the floor for questions, Commissioners, or either Melinda or Tenessa?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Shane Field?
I have a question as to if they have a percentage of increase. I know that I've had some conversations with Tenessa recently about this, but what the percentage of increase in services has been since March? As I guess, in comparison to 2019?
So it's been kind of hit and miss. We had from March to April was a massive increase in our crisis line calls, more than doubled from one month to the other. And so that was huge for us because we were at the same time trying to work from home and still provide those services when, when it's safety, it's basic needs that need to be addressed, and how do you do that in a safe way? So our crisis line calls and hotline calls more than doubled. September, we just, I just saw stats this morning, and September was actually a pretty slow month. But July was very busy, so it's still pretty up and down. We're still seeing a little bit higher numbers than last year compared to a year ago with the same months, but I mean, it's hard to tell. We served 42 victims in July, and September numbers went down. So it's definitely an ebb and flow. There doesn't seem to be a clear pattern except for slowly ticking up, and then it kind of drops and then slowly picks up. So I can answer that as best I can, but I don't have, I don't have very clear stats. It's, it's very random.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Shane Field, any more questions?
Not a question. I just wanted, the reason that I asked that question is that, I mean, we just had a conversation about how dreary our budget is going to potentially look, and I think that it's really important for us to remember, especially due to COVID, that these services are very much needed. And so I, I think that that, that just contributes to the complexity of what we need to look at for moving forward with our budget and how we can help provide these services throughout our community and, and still maintain a balanced budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Shane Field. Point well taken. Any other questions, Commissioners? I have a couple. Tenessa, the increase in violence during the COVID, do you have a breakdown of how much of it was adult and how much of it was child?
Yes, our stats that we keep are, we work with adults. If it's a child of abuse, then it's going to get reported to DFS. So we, we, all of our stats that we report are adults. So those 357 victims we served in the last year are all adults. We do break down like our shelter. So we had 74 adults in the shelter and 50 children in the shelter. So we keep track of that. But all, all of our numbers are adults, and then we do work with kids with sexual assaults and some abuse when they do a forensic interview, and we're there to help provide services, but those are also getting reported to DFS.
Thank you very much. One final question for me, and it's either for Tenessa or Melinda is an observation, when I drive, do or drive, I notice the trees are decorated in purple and that, I'm sure that's part of domestic violence, but there's one tree that has red on it. Is there a significance of that one tree being red and the rest of them being in our familiar domestic violence color?
I feel it has a very practical reason, and I will just clarify that when we first put the lights up, it shorted out one tree, and so we had to replace, and we didn't have another set of purple lights or the, the exact shade of purple, so.
And so we had to replace and we didn't have another set of purple lights or the, the exact shade of purple. So that was what we had available. So we hadn't meant it to be anything particular, but yes, the lights on do or drive are part of that. We do have smaller signs and we're trying to get our final bigger sign put up, but it wasn't ready when we put the lights up. So and we note posted that at least uh, no more shorts have occurred, so they should all stay purple.
Alrighty, well, I just noticed.
Purple.
Yeah, I just noticed that this morning when I was picking up donuts and I'm going, wait a minute. I thought I'd asked this morning.
Yeah, I, I looked too, because I looked and I went, is it just an odd purple? Nope, it's red. Putting blue, purple lights on my list for buying when I get to office.
Look, I mean, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, any other questions before Commissioner Shanefield uh, reads the proclamation for us to approve? All right, Commissioner Shanefield, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Whereas YWCA, Sweetwater County recognizes and participates in a public awareness campaign to support National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence. And to show support for the organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. And on average, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States. During one year, this equates to more than 10 million men and women. And domestic violence can take the form of physical, emotional, sexual psychology, psychological and economic abuse. And too often, the victims of domestic violence are children who can have lifelong repercussions from the emotional or physical trauma of being exposed to domestic violence. And domestic violence survivors and their advocates in Sweetwater County have rallied to the cause of victim justice. And the government and citizens of Sweetwater County fully recognize the need to treat victims with dignity and compassion. Now therefore, we, the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And call upon our citizens to stand together against domestic violence, offer support and understanding to survivors and participate in domestic violence awareness activities. Purple wristbands will be available throughout the community to wear in support of awareness of domestic violence. The annual silent witness vigil will be modified to a drive-through luminary event on October 20th from 5:30 to 6:30 PM at Bunning Park in Rock Springs, Wyoming.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, your pleasure regarding this proclamation.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shanefield.
I will make a motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion by Commissioner Shanefield. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ladies, thank you for being with us this morning. Thank you for what you do. And uh, your help over the years and bringing this to the forefront as something that we need to keep uh, ahead of or try to get ahead of within our community. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day and be safe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item is approval for holding a Calcutta. That's a state championship event, November 5th through the 7th, 2020. And I believe joining us this morning is Mr. Gillespie. Are you there, Mr. Gillespie?
Yes, I am.
Very good. Uh, um, I will turn over the floor to you, please, sir.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, I represent a group of hunters in Wyoming and surrounding states that participate in uh, a circle, a circuit-style hunts, seven of which are around the state of Wyoming. And then at the conclusion of the year, we hold a state championship hunt. The state championship hunt this year will be held in Rock Springs at the Santa Fe Trails Restaurant in Rock Springs. And it's on November 6th and 7th is the hunt. It's a two-day hunt. And we're requesting permission to hold a Calcutta for participating teams in the hunt. And part of the money raised during the Calcutta, we'd like to earmark for the nonprofit Mule Fanatic organization for youth hunters with life-threatening disabilities. And 15% of proceeds will go to that group and to help support their uh, costs and stuff to go hunting. And uh, usually we have about 75 hunters in our event, uh, about 25 teams. We raise anywhere from about a thousand to $1,500 in the Calcutta. And 15% of that will go back to the Mule Fanatic organization. Uh, we have participants anywhere from nine years old this year up to 70 years old that have registered so far. And our goal, our, our main, I mean, we like to go out and have fun, but our main goal is to help the Wyoming game of fish with the wildlife populations around the state of Wyoming and helping control predators. So it's a, it's a fun event and I guess I'm just asking for permission to hold the Calcutta.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Uh, Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
I just recently became aware that the land or one-shot animal hunt was canceled this year and uh, Mr. Gillespie, is that causing any problems with uh, your organization of this, this hunt?
No, we haven't, we haven't had any difficulties. Uh, we uh, we have a banquet on Saturday night, which we'll have a dinner at the Santa Fe, but uh, we'll be, you know, out in the open most of the time and uh, we'll get together in the facility and we'll, we'll honor all the masks and social distancing while we're in that group. And we'll make everybody aware of them uh, requirements.
Thank you.
But we, we don't have any, any uh, issues.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie.
And the other one, uh, I think we're talking about deer and I was just wondering, as I came to work this morning, there were two nice bucks on the, on the grass in front of the courthouse. Are they safe?
Yep.
As all, probably all of my, that are in town. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Anything else? I didn't mean to talk over you.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, uh, any other questions for Mr. Gillespie, Commissioners? With that, I would ask uh, Mr. De Leon, um, is there anything we need to uh, be appraised of? And for this Calcutta?
Uh, so just so the Commissioners know, the uh, statutory requirement is just um, 10% and so they've gone above and beyond in, in terms of uh, their percentage. And I think they've uh, substantially complied. And so US Commissioners uh, can choose to make a motion to approve the Calco- Calcutta. The statute simply requires that you do not uh, make a resolution opposing it. Uh, so you can choose to make a motion in support of it. The only requirement is that you, you don't, in order to have it, that you don't make a re- resolution against it.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. De Leon? Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
With that outstanding legal opinion of Mr. De Leon, I'd make a motion to approve holding a Calcutta at the state championship event, November 5th through the 7th, 2020, as requested.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Calcutta by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? No further discussion. I do have one comment uh, I wanted to make prior to the motion, so I'm going to make it now. But anyhow, I did have an opportunity to go, go into Mule Fanatic and uh, of course, Mr. Corsi is doing what he should be doing. Sponsoring hunts and working with uh, Mule Fanatics to uh, continue its growth. But anyhow, in there is a pictures, I believe, of the youth that have benefited all over the country um, from the money that's being contributed from this Calcutta, that 15%. And I would encourage any Commissioner, if you have time, that office here in Green River, stop in and, and uh, take a look at uh, the number of youth and who they are and where they're from that have benefited from this uh, event, uh, at least not the event, but the contribution of 15% that's being donated. So I'd just like Mr. Gillespie to know, we appreciate that and uh, it's, it's quite a thing that it's doing. So with that, uh, that's my final comment. Uh, I'll ask for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Gillespie, you do have your uh, Calcutta.
Thank you very much.
And you guys have a good time and be safe.
Okay, appreciate it. You, thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
Alright, bye.
Alright, moving on, we have a tab J, which is a change order, one long drive construction project. Uh, Mr. Legursky, are you out there?
Yes, I am. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Chairman Wendley. Um, what you have before you is a change order for a long drive project. When we originally designed this project and looked at it, we knew the utility trenches had failed, um, but we thought that they were failing because of bad compaction and not the heavy clay that was uh, in the subgrade. So when we actually tore the road apart, we found heavy clays that were um, very bad underneath the whole entire roadway and just instead of in isolated areas. We had soft spot repair, but we did not expect to subx out the whole entire roadway and put it back. So that's what this for. This is coming out of fuel tax money. It was budgeted because Dibonardi came in so much cheaper originally um, than what I had estimated at the project. So all of this is budgeted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGursky. Commissioners, any questions regarding this change order? With no questions, Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
Oh, I make a motion to approve the change order as requested between Sweetwater County and the contractor Dibonardi Construction for the uh, added expenses incurred as the construction went forward on uh, I think it was long drive. Uh, is that not right, Jean?
That's correct.
Uh, on long drive.
And authorize Chairman to sign all necessary documents?
Yes, sir.
I thought I heard that. We've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Jean, you got your change order.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a good day. Uh, moving on, our next agenda item is uh, request to restaff vacant position in the Sheriff's Office. And with us is uh, Mr. Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. McLean and our Sheriff, Mr. Grossnickel. Morning, Mr. Sheriff.
Um, uh, Mr. Chairman, we've got uh, two separate requests here. One was for the facilities position and, and I need to discuss that um, in executive session. If we could defer that till executive session. Um, there's some personnel issues need to be discussed there. And then if we could, if we're ready to reset, uh, talk about the sheriff's position, that's not executive session.
Yeah, I, I didn't bring up the uh, facilities one because it was requested for executive sessions. So I just slide over, move right over into yours with the sheriff.
Sure.
You have the floor for the uh, vacant position, the sheriff's office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners. We got a request to um, fill a vacancy in, in the patrol position. We had a, the sheriff recently had a request from a patrol officer to move into detention. And so we filled one of the detention positions that uh, created uh, a vacancy in the patrol position. And I believe the sheriff has provided the board with a letter kind of summarizing his, his thoughts uh, on, on that issue. One of, one of the things overall, um, is, is we've discussed in the past. Um, it's a, it's a little harder issue um, with respect to patrol and it's a quality of service issue. Uh, in the detention side, there's actually specific posts that are necessary to um, um, and required to oversee the inmates in there. And we've done that. Um, and so the sheriff's kind of provided an explanation in terms of uh, service level and expectation from the county. So I'll let him um, expound on that further.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Sheriff Grossnickel, good morning, sir. You're muted. There you go.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. A- as the, the letter provides uh, the explanation of, of how our patrol deputies are broken down into the four shifts with uh, four actual patrol deputies and one supervisor on each shift. We run 12-hour shifts and uh, with that breakdown, we're able to provide uh, Sweetwater County with the law enforcement services that we have. You're all aware of how large the county is. Um, there are many times we have deputies far east a- as the county line in Wamsutter and all the way west uh, to Granger and even uh, up in Farsen. And we get spread out um, a lot of the time with these calls for service. But we have done uh, our due diligence and have the data to, to support why each of those shifts has the amount of uh, employees on them that we do.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff Grossnickel. Commissioners, any question for the sheriff or Mr. McLean? With no questions, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
I move that we approve the request to restaff a vacant position by the sheriff as presented and allow the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with Chairman to sign. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion, Commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McLean. Thank you, Sheriff. Both of you have a good day.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Uh, next we have is other. Uh, Commissioners, anything under other? With nothing under other, the next thing we'll move into is executive session. As earlier was mentioned, for personnel as well as real estate. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So we'll move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Johnson, a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. All four or all three of you?
We're anxious.
Let's go, yes!
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed sign. We will move into executive session. Um, I don't know if there'll be any action taken uh, afterwards, but uh, let's also take a 15-minute break and be back here at 12 o'clock.